Good evening and welcome to the September 5th meeting of Troy City Council. I'm Marty Baker, President of Council. Please silence your electronic devices for the duration of the meeting. We will begin with the invocation by Mr. Doug Tremblay, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we take this moment to reflect upon and thank you for all the blessings you have given us. Please continue to watch over us. We ask that you especially watch over the victims of Hurricane Harvey and those who are aiding in the recovery effort. We also ask that you watch over our first responders and armed forces personnel as they risk their lives in order to protect us. Please guide us in wisdom and courage to best service our citizens. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Heath? Mr. Tremblay?
Here.
Mrs. Oda?
Here.
Mr. Twiss?
Here.
Mr. Schwizer? Mr. Kendall?
Here.
Mr. Twilliger?
Here.
Mr. Phillips?
Here.
Mrs. Snee?
I move to excuse Mr. Heath.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Tremblay and seconded by Mr. Twiss to excuse Mr. Heath. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Twiss?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Heath is excused.
I move to excuse Mrs. Snee.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Kendall and seconded by Mr. Twiss to excuse Mrs. Snee. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Twiss?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee is excused.
Motion to excuse Mr. Schwizer.
Second. It's been moved by Mr. Phillips and seconded by Mrs. Oda to excuse Mr. Schwizer. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Twiss?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Schwizer is excused.
Mrs. Knight, please read a summary of the minutes of the August 21st meeting of Troy City Council.
Minutes of Council, August 21, 2017. Committee reports. Community and Economic Development Committee reported regarding the three legislative items needed for the Strayer Annexation at 2900 McKay Road, recommending they be approved. Resolution R. 35, 2017. Municipal services for territory to be annexed was first reading and adopted. Resolution Number R. 36. Buffering statement for territory to be annexed was given first reading and adopted. Resolution Number R. 37, 2017. Consent to annexation first reading and adopted. Resolution Number R. 38, 2017. Establishing new meeting date for Assessment Equalization Board first reading and adopted. Ordinance Number O. 23, 2017. Establishing new date for Pink Ribbon Girl event was given first reading and adopted. Following various comments, council then adjourned at 7:36 PM.
Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes?
Move to approve the minutes.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Phillips and seconded by Mr. Kendall to approve the minutes. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Twiss?
Yes.
Minutes are approved.
On committee reports, for council record, I have a short report on the council workshop session. Council met in workshop session on August 21st. Presentation was given by consultants concerning a pedestrian bridge and the option to file a grant application for future consideration and construction. As a whole, council chose not to pursue any action at the present time. Do any other committees have any reports this evening? And there are no resolutions or ordinances on our agenda. Mrs. Knight, are there any communications or announcements?
No, there are not.
And, Ms. Mayor Bemish, do you have comments this evening?
Well, for your avenging calendar, October 14th is a Saturday, and that will be the next Mayor's Prayer Breakfast. It'll be at the First Baptist Church. It starts at 9:00. It has a great breakfast included, but I think, as we all agree, it's a time for spiritual guidance, and I hope everybody will put that on their calendar and choose to attend the Mayor's Prayer Breakfast. Beyond that, you may notice along the levee, a lot of American flags. The optimists have a Walk of Remembrance. The flags are there for patriotism or to think of a veteran that they would like to remember or a loved one. That's there, and they'll be there through the week and through Patriot Day, which is obviously 9/11. I would also call your attention, we've heard a lot about the First Annual Troy Memorial Freedom Climb. That is going to be at the Troy Memorial Stadium on Sunday. They will start with check-in at 12:30. They'll have a ceremony at 1:30, and by 2:00, they'll do the climb. If you're so inclined and healthy enough, you can go up and down the stadium 64 times. That represents 1,980 steps that it would take into Twin Towers. So it's something that Sergeant Joe Stutz has worked so hard to get started. It'll be a first annual, and there are proceeds from that registration that will go to four different, two nationals and two locals, to benefit those associations. So it's a good, it's a good thing. It's the right time in our country and actually in our world today to remember. So, thank you very much for allowing me to share those things.
Thank you. Mr. Titterington?
Nothing this evening. Thank you, ma'am.
Director of Law, Mr. Kerber.
I don't have anything, Madam President. Thank you.
Thank you. Any comments from council members this evening? Mrs. Oda?
I have a statement I'm going to read regarding the bike lanes. In light of the negative comments we are receiving in person and on social media and in response to the questionable numbers being reported from the bike counters, I am requesting that council president convene a committee to discuss legislation that would impose an immediate moratorium on the implementation of any further dedicated bike lanes within the city limits of Troy. It is incumbent on the city administration and this council to take a step back and address the questions and concerns on both sides of this issue. While the dedicated bike lanes are receiving split reviews, they are overwhelmingly and negatively one-sided and warrant more discussion. Thank you.
Okay. At your request, I would consider sending this to the Safety and Health Committee for discussion, and I think I would further request that no further streets be designated until this is resolved. And, Mrs. Oda, I would request that you work with Mrs. Knight and staff to set up a meeting and to further elaborate what the ultimate goal is for the request. Are there any comments from other council members? Anyone else? Okay. I do have a question. Council adopted the Complete Streets policy that calls for a shared roadway on Dorset Road. In the newspaper on Sunday, there was an article, and the mayor was quoted as saying that a bike lane on Dorset has not been decided. It was a little confusing to me, knowing that we had just adopted the Complete Streets policy, and why was the Troy Daily News not told that that would be a shared street, which is what the Complete Streets policy, as I read it, indicates that Dorset would be a shared road?
The Complete Streets policy, when they designate on the map, they have two designations. One is future, and these are the two dotted lines. One's red and one's olive.
Orange.
Orange, olive. So the dotted red is off-street asphalt bike paths. On-street, they call it bike share or share the road or something along those lines. Those could mean either a dedicated lane or a lane that is multi-use, shared by both vehicles and cyclists. And so, when the comment was made to the reporter about Dorset, the decision as to whether or not that should be a dedicated lane or an actual shared lane with traffic had not been determined. Based on our review, we are probably looking at more of a shared road and not a dedicated bike lane on Dorset. So that would still be a designation. It would just be the shared use and not the dedicated use.
Would it be possible to get a clearer map or multiple maps, if necessary, for different sections of town that more clearly define what is within the Complete Streets? That map that was in there was really not very clear.
Yeah, I think what it lacks is clear street names, just because it's so small, but we will, we'll work with G.I.S. to come up with bigger maps.
And that does become confusing, then, people, as to know what streets are what. I don't know how we can further clarify that a shared road is either/or. I don't know if there'd be another way that we could...
Yeah, we could add something to the legend. If we added something to the legend that means either/or and just put it in that, that's probably the easiest way to denote it. You know, we don't, because we look at each, if you look at the Complete Streets, it is a, it's a policy, it's a vision, it's something that we are going to include in any maintenance, any repairs, any renovations, construction projects. And so, you know, it's important that, well, it's really probably almost impossible to, at this point, designate which streets would make more sense as dedicated bike lanes versus a shared street. And so that's why there's only the two designations between a path and a shared road and not further designations. But we can enhance the legend, to be clear.
Maybe the map's okay. But I would request that we don't do any more designated lanes until after this other question is clarified and cleared up.
Madam President, we don't have any intention on doing any more at this point in the near future.
Any comments from city staff this evening? Any comments from the audience this evening? If so, please come to the microphone and state your name and address.
Mr. Connor, 1210 South Clay Street, Troy, Ohio. We had another good downpour last night, and Westbrook was swimming again. I haven't yet seen anybody out there to clean out any of them storm sewers, or whatever they're called, where the water goes down into the little things. I mentioned it before. I did get a call from Jerry, but I have yet seen anybody out there to clean anything. And since all this has been going on, I've been watching a lot of these storm things, and it looked to me like for a safety issue that Troy would have its street crews going around and cleaning them up, because there's so much debris, leaves and sticks and pop bottles and cans blocking the thing so the water can't even go down. And that's just, you know, on the grade itself. So, you know, I mean, we're having an issue with water here in Troy, and I don't, you know, and we're taking over $4 a month now for storm water, and it looks to me like they could be using that money to do something with these storms, sewers.
Mr. Connor, was that specifically on Gloucester or what streets?
Gloucester again, yeah.
You were noticing it on Gloucester?
Yeah, it was flooded again last night, and a bunch of limbs and stuff that was out in the street, all washed down to the Surrey. They're laying there on the, by Surrey, on the corner. So, you know, but, you know, like I said, with these others always covered with sticks and leaves and dirt and cans and bottles, it just looks to me like for preventative maintenance that somebody would, when they're out driving around, could just stop and clean them all. That would even help. You know?
Thank you. Mr. Titterington was taking notes, so I guess that'll be...
Yeah, just, my only comment is, is that we do that on a routine basis. We can go out and take a look at that one tomorrow.
Well, there's two. One right across from me. There's one here and one right across the road, and they both...
Can you be a little more specific than here and across the road?
Well, 718 Gloucester.
Okay.
And then right across the street from 718, there's another one there. And that, that street's flooded all the time. I just don't, you know, it's been a month or over a month, and still nothing other. I did get a call, but that didn't, that didn't do a thing for the sewers. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, evening. My name's Mickey Hammer, 1160 Red Maple Drive, and this is third meeting in a row for me. Still complaining, issues similar to the previous gentleman's complaint around storms, stormwater. So, does anybody have a clue how many inches we got yesterday, last night?
My understanding was we got two inches.
Two inches. My yard flooded again. I just had six yards of topsoil brought in and had it reseeded, and it all got washed away. I mulched it, it was in my one bed, washed all the way across my yard, and it's gone. So, everything's gone. So who do I send the bill to to make sure I can get this redone? Because this was supposed to be addressed. Now, this is going on the third meeting, that's been, what, six weeks? I still haven't heard anything about what's being done to fix this problem or even address the problem. I haven't heard a plan. I haven't heard anything. Can somebody please enlighten me?
Mr. Titterington, any comments?
Well, it's my understanding that you and some, maybe not you, but area neighbors met with the developer, with the contractor, and the contractor was, the storm contractor was to go out to televise the storm line, see if there's any blockages.
Which, to my knowledge, has not happened.
Okay. We did see some photos of, I believe maybe your wife forwarded some photos to our engineer this morning, and there was some, there was some ponding. It looked like it was primarily on the lots that were undeveloped, where there were some...
Which is right next to my lot, and it's still there, and if any water comes now, it's going to continue on into my yard. So what is going to be done?
And so, I'm going to ask Mrs. Rhodes to follow up tomorrow with you and the developer and see where they're at and push them along as quickly as possible.
So who's held accountable for this? Because I'm, I'm involved in a very large business, not my own, it's a public, it's not a publicly held company, but I'm used to, when things are not right, at least there's a plan to fix it, and that plan is communicated. I've heard nothing, and this is six weeks. This is absolutely ridiculous. One of the things I asked about at the very first meeting when I was here was, could we put a moratorium on these buildings to stop the buildings until we can find out what's going on? What I have in front of me is the Stormwater Management Guidelines, Compliance Responsibility. It says, give you 1125.06 C, or, excuse me, E, which is enforcement. If it is found that the operators are being, operations are being conducted in violations of the approved site development plan or SAP, a stop-work order may be issued until the identified violations are ceased. Why do I have to find that? Why doesn't anybody here know that and can act on it?
Okay. You know, I apologize that, I know you're frustrated.
Slightly.
Just a little bit, and understandably so. This is a developer issue that we are trying to work with you on, and I'm aware of that, and engineering...
Were you aware of it six weeks ago?
I was only aware of the problem that came up six weeks ago, and we've been working...
But when I asked that question, you said you didn't think you could do it.
Well, I'm not sure if we can before we try to resolve the issue with the developer.
But nothing's been resolved, nothing's been tried.
It is six weeks later. We've been, she's been out talking to the neighbors. We've been thinking that there'd been some resolution going on. I guess my only concern and caution is, is that because the ponding and the damming, if you will, is occurring on the undeveloped properties, you know, one thing that we would need to ask is, do we make the problem worse if we, if we put a moratorium on a building so that that property, those properties are not developed and it stays as bare dirt?
Could they, could they put the storm drains in?
That's, that's possible. That's something that we need to talk to them about. I'm not an engineer, I can't, I can't give you that answer.
It just seems like things are being done backwards. If you're not able to get the water to where it's supposed to go, it's going to go wherever it thinks it's supposed to go. It's going to go downhill, and it's coming right through my yard every single time. So I'll ask the question again. I have a bill for $600-ish dollars that I am ready to pay my landscape guy, and now that is completely gone. So I'm going to have to have it redone. Who do I send the bill to?
It's really, it's really premature to make a conclusion as far as any legal responsibility for that.
Certainly not mine!
This, this certainly could be an issue with a number of different things, and with a comprehensive drainage plan for a site that size, there has to be investigation.
Who approved the plan?
There's all, well, and there's a question of, has everything been built?
Who's going to find, who's going to find that out?
That is my understanding of what the engineer is doing at this point.
So that's taken six weeks.
Their engineer has been, because they're rerunning the calculations and their shootings things to make sure that the construction folks did it the way it's supposed to be done.
And how long is that going to take?
I'm going to follow up tomorrow morning, and we're going to round back on the engineer. They have been working on it, I know that. At this point, they have not, they have not seen any issues with what's been done. Because this is a development under construction, it's not completely done. So the stormwater plan, the construction plans are not complete because the development's not complete. I guess the, you know...
So in the meantime, I have to deal with my yard getting flooded out, and anything I try to do to make it, you know, what, to my standards, my yard standards, is going to get washed away every time it rains. So I should just quit doing that? Is that what I'm being told? Is that council's recommendation, that I quit trying to have a nice yard? Anybody want to answer or no? I feel like I'm out on an island by myself here, and nothing's being done, and if it's being done, it's because I'm pushing it, and it's being done at a snail's pace, and it's really frustrating. So, thank you for your time.
Anyone else in the audience have any comments or questions?
Jim Thompson, 209 Otting Hill. I really hadn't planned to do this this kind of a moment. I have two curiosities, actually. I was born and raised in this town, and I've been riding, I love to ride bikes, contrary to what some might believe after the past. I was raised, and I still believe it this way, that all streets in Troy are shared lane. Is that a correct statement?
Yes.
Then I'm, this is curiosity, this is brought up earlier about the, like a designated share. Why would you absolute, why'd you have a designated shared lane when all streets are in essence shared lane? It's curiosity is all.
Sure. So, with only possible few exceptions, and I don't know that we even have them here in Troy, state law does allow cyclists the same rights on the roads as vehicles, as long as they follow the traffic code, which we are well aware doesn't always happen, and we continue to try to educate people on that. The idea of shared roads, including markings, as far as adding dedicated bike lanes, those are to provide safer ways for those that want to ride their bikes but who are not comfortable with just riding in traffic, because you're basically pitting 100-and-some-pound person and a 100-pound bike against a 2,000-pound vehicle.
But, but wouldn't a shared lane, you would still be exactly that? You're still in the same lane, and the cars are in the same lane with you? That's a shared lane, correct?
A shared lane, yes, it could, that's very, that's one option, yes.
But I went, so if it is that, I'm, I'm not, and I'm not fighting tonight with you on this, I'm just, if that's the case, what you were just saying about what people would feel more comfortable in a shared lane that's designated a shared lane, other than a sign what's protecting them, it's the same lane, other than maybe a decal says this is a shared lane? I don't, I don't get that.
A shared lane just, it provides an additional notice to vehicles that, you know, you might have bike, you might have cyclists.
Okay.
And as we're looking at providing alternative transportation for anybody who wants to travel the roads, that's just another way to hopefully make people in cars more aware of the possibility of there being cyclists around.
Okay. The other curiosity, and I'll have, this will be a little more long-winded, I have, because these folks weren't involved in this, but it'll be a little history to it, but either just recently, and it might be over now, I know there was a, a labor position came open at Miami Shores, and I know they were, they went through the process and they posted internally throughout the city, and there was bids on it, and I know they were doing some interviewing, and they might have already decided who that person is to fill in, I don't know, but they're keeping that, you all keeping that labor position. And I'm bringing this up because it's a personal thing. I no longer work for this city, as you know, I'm retired, but two and a half years ago, when I was working for the city at the golf course, the parks at that time had a labor position come open, they went through the process, internal bidding, and no one bid on that position. What they normally in the past would do, you go to the outside where the folks take the test and so forth, and they start interviewing. At that point, I was called in by Ken Green, matter of fact, Mike Moniachi, and their worker, he was with me that day, and Ken informed me of that day, that because of every year since Ken has pretty much been the pro out there, they've been, we've been subsidizing $200,000 to $300,000 a year. He had said that after a conversation with you, Mr. Tittering, that he was pressed to try to save some money, and he, in his words, said at that time that he could not come up with another way to save any money. But between yourself and him, and I don't know if you remember this incident or not, it should come back to you, I'm thinking, I know Tom over here will remember, in an effort to save $20,000, you folks used a lateral move, taking labor from one place to the other, and normally that's a voluntary thing. However, this time, it was a force. You came up with that you would do away with that labor, a labor position at the golf course, and you would force me, in a lateral move, to fill the position at the parks, and then you would fill my previous position at the golf course, there would no longer be a city labor position there. It would be downsized just to two labors over there, and you would use seasonal help. So my question is, if it was prudent two and a half years ago, to save the city $20,000, you eliminated one of the labors and you replaced it with seasonals, why now, when you have the same opportunity, with the golf course labor position came open, why would you not eliminate yet another city position full-time and bring in seasonal help and save the city again $20,000?
Well, I guess in a nutshell, because there's a point in working with, with Mr. Green, that he felt that he needed a certain balance between full-time and part-time. Green, that he felt that he needed a certain balance between full-time and part-time. And so when this latest vacancy came over due to a transfer, he decided that we needed to rehire that full-time position back into it.
What would make the difference between...
That's one less than what was there when you transferred.
Right. But what I'm saying, if you have, if you have the seasonals replace that position, which I'm assuming they're adequately doing what I used to do now, and spring, summer, and fall is the busy time of the course, why would they need a full-timer all year round? When, let's face it, in the winter, that is the downtime.
It is the downtime, except that there is, there are certain basic tasks that are...
Oh, I know, sir, I did it for two and a half years.
Okay, so there's a certain level of full-time positions that Ken feels he needs, and so that's why we're replacing the latest one that became vacant. It's one, it's one less than when you were there, but to go one further, he didn't think that he could sustain what he's doing out there.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm sorry, I was thinking of another thing. Connor, 1210 South Clay Street. Does a school or anybody give classes for the bicyclist? I mean, I have yet to see anybody give me a left turn, right turn, stop. I've never seen that done. And I pulled a old bicycle out of my shed the other day, and it had on there 6567, a license for the bicycles that you had to have here in Troy. Maybe we ought to reenact that again and help them, let the bicyclists help pay for the streets and the roads and all that, too. You know, I mean, instead of us picking it all up and losing our road, and they're going to get our, get designated, let's let them help pay for it.
Question, your question number one, going back to the training.
Right.
There is some safety training being given by the Troy Police Department to the younger students that are learning to ride, and that's when they get that training. To my knowledge, there is no current, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but to my knowledge, there is no current classes being offered for adults. Mr. Titterington, do you have further on that?
That is correct. Currently, we do not have any adult classes or instruction. However, we have been talking to the regional agency Bike Miami Valley about the possibility of bringing some of those classes up to, up to Troy, and perhaps partnering with our neighboring communities to, to offer that on a northern region basis.
But then on the second issue of the license for the bicycle, I think that would be a good thing to help offset the cost of the roads and the streets for the citizens that we had to pay for to maintain them, just like we're now $20 on our tags, $10 for the city, $10 for the county, and this could also help offset that some, too, to maybe even get that reduced instead of having the $10 and $10. You know, let the bicyclists, if there's so much, let them help pay for it.
We would have to do some, I, you know, research on that.
That would be through the police department and communities that still use licensing of bicycles, primarily do it for theft prevention or easier identification if it's stolen. With the, the numbers, I haven't done the math, but I'm not sure, but the cost per license would be quite expensive, given the, the number of bikes that are probably out there, and the, and the fact that this would be an additional administrative cost on the police department. So we'd have to offset that, and then I'm not even sure there'd be any money left over to, to do anything with the roads. It would be, it'd be a very expensive license, I think.
I, okay, thank you.
Carrie Kemper, 412 West Canal Street. Can I reply to him about the bike camps? Because my 10-year-old has been for two years.
You may.
There's a basic biker camp and an advanced biker cap camp, and they do learn the armed signals, and they do teach them how to ride in the street versus the bike lanes. Now for what I'm here for. On August 31st, 2017, at 8:56 a.m., Patrick Titterington posted on Robin Otis' Facebook page, and I quote, "If you see traffic violations on bike, walking, or driving, call 911." I decided to go and sit at the bike counter box on Water Street behind the library because I, like many other residents of Troy, do not believe the bike count numbers that we are being told. I sat there from approximately 10:30 a.m. to 2:25 p.m. My final counts was five bikes, 17 cars, and two trucks with trailers that went over the counter strips. Should I have called 911 19 times, Mr. Titterington? I think it is safe to say that the bike counts that you're claiming are not truly from bikes alone. I challenge anyone who believes that these bike counts that we are being told to go sit at the bike counter and watch the cars and other vehicles driving over the strips.
Is there any other comments this evening?
I'm Cindy Schaefer, and I live at 26 and a half North Short Street. Recently, I heard from someone who said that you had 400 bikes going through over that bike counter. Someone also told me that the cars and trucks were not on that bike counter. Is that true? Yes or no? I mean, does anybody know?
You say that the cars are not going over the counter?
Well, they're going over that. I'm, I'm asking, is that included in your 400 count or whatever it is? You know?
I think that that count is whatever is going over that counter. Because I don't think that it can distinguish, that the counter can distinguish one from the other.
Okay, that's what we thought. Because from Friday of last week till this morning, there was only five bikes out there. So I've been going out and telling them to get in, in that bike lane, and no one wants to get in that bike lane because they're afraid of being hit, especially through the week. Three weeks ago, there was something happening, I don't know what happened, but I saw the big fire truck go up Main, and then the ambulance came down Water, and everybody was scooting out of the way onto the bike path. So I'm, I'm thinking, well, there's a lot of ticket money right there because they're not allowed to do that. Then about 10 minutes later, another ambulance came through Water Street, and everybody had a scatter. So, living on that corner, I can attest, there's hardly anybody on it, and I, and I don't think people know there's supposed to be on it. I've seen joggers on there more than I have the bikes. And the kids tell me they don't want to be on there because they're afraid of being hit, because that is a small, you know, small area. I rode my bike all over town, and even today, I'll ride, again, I can't get on it right now because I've got something going on here, but I will just go and get on the street. What I don't like is everybody riding their bikes on the sidewalks in town. And I, and I see it a lot downtown where it was posted that they are not supposed to ride their bikes. So I just wanted to make sure that I was hearing that correctly, because I didn't think that that would be the bikes. There are about three guys that come daily, and they do, one rides it on one way down to the library, and then he comes back on the bike path. He, he doesn't want to have going and coming over there. I mean, we're adjusting to it, but they just don't want to do it. I took my Jeep and stood out in front of the safety department building, and I asked two deputy sheriff to stand there, and they said, what are you going to do? I said, I'm going to test this out. So I had my, sitting in my Jeep, and the tanker, I'm sure that it was Sunoco that probably went over to the Sunoco station, he came down the street. We had six inches between our mirrors for them to come through there. When the buses come through there, there's not much leeway for everybody to go. That's the only problem. There's not enough room for buses and the tankers and everybody else. So I just want to pass that on, and I wanted to make sure that the counts that we have is because everybody's riding over that. So I'll tell the neighbors about it. I don't think I have anything else, we're just going with the flow, we're trying to. The other thing is, when they come off the bridge on Adam, they turn and stay on that, on the, let's say that way, on, from the north to the south, they stay on that side, the east side, and make that curb on the sidewalk, and then they come down. They don't want to come across the street and then come to another light, come out and go, if that makes sense. So, just want to let you know.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments this evening? If not, thank you for attending tonight's meeting. Have a safe and peaceful week.